Cousin Ralph.
I don't know what that was, Commissioner. I don't know if he was, was he in part of the... Well, thanks.
I don't remember him being in a part of the...
I got a bunch of them. I got them soft though. Some organizations, I don't even know what they are.
He worked, uh, County Home. He was the director of County Home. Second cousin. He was older than that.
Here we go. 7:01. Uh, well, at 7:01, we'll begin Village Webster Board Meeting for June 13, 2024. And, uh, I think we'll start first of all with a pledge. And Jerry, would you lead us, please? We'd all stand.
To the light and the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you very much. This evening, we are going to be, uh, given a presentation by Lynn Barton, who is the village librarian.
Oh, really?
And I guess the town librarian.
Historian.
Historian, not librarian.
Historian. Oh, my goodness. When did you change?
I don't know. I thought I had another title.
Well, I just sat with the, um, town head librarian in a meeting last week or two.
So it's kind of the same thing. So this is brief, so don't worry.
Good to see you.
Um, are you gonna flip them for me? So this is, of course, my reminder of what it was like 20 years ago when I took over. I can't believe it's 20 years. Um, keep going. Go ahead. And luckily, the yearbooks upstairs broke. A main joist in the ceiling collapsed, so I had to get a whole new office. Um, these are all the yearbooks. Recently, we put in order when, um, a young man came in to get information on the Bay Bridge. And while he was there, um, I showed him the office, and he volunteered to help me put them all back in order. They're very heavy. So that was a good job done. Go ahead. Um, I have a lot of boxes. The ones that have sticky notes on them are ones that have been sorted. They're in folders. They have codes on them. They are waiting to be put into the da- our database. So we've inputted, so far, we've done 97 boxes of information, and, um, we have five binders that have postcards or photos in them. And those have been done. We have 1,400 line items for village property. There's a total of almost 10,000 line items in the database. Um, and I also store, uh, documents for the museum 'cause I don't have any place safe to store them. So those are included in the database as well. Okay. I have, these are actually town records, but they're very old. Some of the assessment records of, the earliest is 1861. Um, they're in the little blue boxes down on the right. There's, uh, dog records on licensing and court records and overseer of the poor. Um, and I do go through definitely the assessment records sometimes to try and figure out the age of a house or something. Okay, go ahead. Um, just some more. Um, but keep going. I have 10 boxes of school yearbooks. They start in 1918. Uh, I don't know how much longer I'm gonna be able to keep collecting those. And I don't know if I'd have to buy them and spend my budget on them.
You had both, um, RL and Trader?
Yep. I'm missing 2019. I don't know what happened, but I don't have 2019. But otherwise, I've made phone calls this year, and I have to call back. And hopefully, they ordered enough, and I'll be able to get copies. Um, and we have a lot of scrapbooks, and I've had volunteers, um, have been able to index those. They all need to be put into a database, so keep going. I have three fireproof file cabinets. This one has slides that I've scanned. I don't wanna store them in those carousels. They take up too much room, and we don't use those anymore. I have other items in the drawers, like photographs that have yet to be done. Keep going. These belong to the village. Glass plate negatives. Uh, years ago, I had a volunteer, and we went carefully. We got acid-free envelopes, put them in. Now, these are the five-by-sevens. The other ones were the eight-by-tens. I have about 16 eight-by-tens. Um, I have 200, I think, about 288 five-by-sevens. I have nine boxes like that. They have not been inventoried yet. I do, one of my volunteers is very careful, so we're going to, uh, try and get those into the database. I also discovered more. These say "Holly" on them. There's a few boxes like this. So they need to be put in acid-free sleeves and properly stored. So that's what they're like in my file cabinet. Of cour- and then I have village sewer license books. I have quite a few of those. I think those are 1948. I love this. It's a dog tax, Village Webster, 1910, that your little pet would have to wear. It's the only one I've ever seen, so that, that's kind of a neat item. And then I have, like, ribbons. Ralph Whitner, um, keep going. Uh, Mr. Skritner. I think he had business right in the four corners. The Webster Fire Department, of course, was the village's. Keep going. I have this. Um, I have documents, papers. I think this is down on East Main. I think I know which house it is, but anyway. You know, every once in a while, someone asks me, "Oh, was there something in this house?" And I love these old ads 'cause I can answer the question. I recently found these. These are ribbons from the dedication of the Bay Bridge. It's like, oh. So I'm gonna have to, I, I have quite a bit on the Bay Bridge, so they need to be logged in and put in, put in there properly. This is the attic. This is what it looked like. I had, I did have an Eagle Scout that did a project and built all shelves, a huge table. But Judy Nancy has volunteered to help me, and I also talked Bob into, had last year going through all the yearbooks because I'm not gonna keep them all. Some of them are moldy. Some of them have too much writing in them. If somebody wants, um, the museum will sell them a copy for $10. But we're not gonna sell them when that's messy. Um, this is more stuff. I have all these from the centennial celebration of the village. Um, if you guys ever wanna use them for something. These are ceramic, um, they're about this tall. Ceramic artwork, uh, that was also done for the centennial. I have a couple boxes of those. And I have this up there. I think it was on a water tower. It's very, very heavy. 1928. The mayor was, uh, Mr. Ruddy. I can't read the one. And this is the kind of thing I'm gonna sort through. Dick saved these maps. I think they're assessment maps from the town. Um, but I wanna check with them. And then, there's no point in me keeping them if the town already has that information. And this is what the, this is a scaled-down version of the database. Um, the codes. We have a category, the location, um, and then if we know the donor, and a description. If you guys want a copy of the items so far that are inputted, let me know, and I'll get you a copy. And it's on a Google. We use a Google Drive spreadsheet, so that, you know, we can, more than one of us can be on there working at a time. I can do it from home or whatever. Uh, and I gave you a, a write-up of a lot of the stuff that I've done. I did have a visitor a couple weeks ago from Pennsylvania who was looking into foster family history, and he, I spent two hours with him. And he bought our book and, and wrote a check for $250 to the museum. So that was very nice. I still continue to take pictures around the village, you know, businesses that open or close or facades that are being changed. I also am working with, um, a volunteer that flies a drone for me, and he has done some shots in the village. I've got him doing stuff around town. David Malecki is really nice. He's volunteered to do that. And, uh, oh, I've inventoried and organized the map drawers, but I keep finding maps, so that's a pain. And, uh, that's about it. Do you guys have any questions?
I work.
Yeah.
What are the hours over there?
Well, the mu- the museum is open, um, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 2:00 to 4:30. I'm not there usually, but I am sometimes. Um, and then I'm usu- I'm always there Monday morning, Thursday morning, and then times in between. You know, where I meet people or whatever. I take, I know, I answer the phone, and, you know, I hear all that stuff in my office, but then I have everything on my computer I have to try and keep track of. And of course, I, you know, we lost Jeff from Jeff's Computers. He was always so helpful. Luckily, one of my volunteers is very good. She's pretty smart, so, um, she can help. But I don't know who to use if something bad happens, um, with the computer, so... And I do back it up. I try to back it up every week and bring the hard drive home for storage, so...
We have several, um, relatively, I think, old businesses that have been around for quite a while.
Yep.
That are now changing. Do we have pictures of those as they have been? For example, that I think, uh, she was trying to sell that.
Oh, yeah.
That's undergoing change, the corner where Jeff's computer was. The music store has been there for...
Oh, that, that's an early, half of that building is built by the Corning, one of the Cornings that, you know, had that beautiful Corning house. They came early in the 1800s. So that's a, part of that's a really old building. I have photos. That's what, all those boxes, I've got them. I have boxes on organizations in town. I have them on properties by address. I have them, businesses. I have police department. I have village. I have town. I have the school district. I have a volunteer that's been working on that for, like, forever. Um, and that stuff is shortly gonna start getting put into the database. So, yeah, there are photos, documents. Luckily, we had George Wall that took pictures at the turn of the century around the village and Wes Webster. And I think he took at least one in Union Hill. Um, so we do, people ask a lot, um, about the history or if I have photos and things. And then I definitely share my... I had to send something on a house on Lee Grove today to somebody. We had a little write-up about it, so, yeah. That's why I go around and take pictures, too, 'cause there's so many businesses that switch hands. Um, then we had Esther Dunn in, um, the nineteen, the end of the 1960s who went around and documented a lot of, uh, businesses and churches, all kinds of things around town as she was starting to work on her book that was completed in 1970. So luckily, we have those. But we don't have a lot of photos between early 1900, 1960s, and then 1960s on. So that's why I try to get, get as many pictures as I can. And I don't know what'll happen now with digital photography.
Do we have a picture of the four corners with the, um, well? There a well?
Do you mean the fountain? The WCTU fountain? I, I have a picture of the fountain. And I, and it was, um, I don't know how big. And I thought, what is painted on the background of this? And I just wet my finger, and it came off. It probably led pain. But I used a Kleenex and water, and I wiped off the background. It was used in the WCTU booklet that was done, and they just had the fountain. They didn't have the background. But it's the background of the old cobblestone that used to be where, you know, where Barry's was. And now we're gonna get a new Irish pub there. So you can tell approximately where that fountain was based on that picture on the side of the building. So little things like that, you can figure out. Yeah, so, anytime you wanna come down and look through, let me know. Anything else? Are you guys all set?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I will open the floor up for public comment. Anybody who'd like to address the board. And then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move then to regular business. And the first item we have is a resolution to approve minutes. We were from May 1st and May 23rd.
I'll read the motion to approve the minutes.
Second. I'll second.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Uh, next, we have a resolution to approve claims and warrants. Quite a few of them actually, that may have run through. I have a couple questions I don't intend to do, but... I have a couple. One is Jake Admer. A wood chipper, we rented for one day for $200. Is that the reason, or is there a reason why? Do you think that could be that for a reason?
Yes, our chipper, Earl. Um, it was the wooden charge, and we thought there was a problem with the, um, alternator. It wasn't that. We were getting a pardon in from Syracuse, and it turned out it was the, there was a diode or a relay or something that was bad. They changed that and got it back working for us. So we were doing, are doing our brush pick-up, and wanted to keep it going, so...
Um, the other thing that I, I noticed is, um, a spike in water usage. In, um, April, the water usage that we were built for, I guess the sewer plant, was two times what it had been for almost a year prior to that. And then in May, it was at least a third more again. So the reason why we have a spike?
I know, and that's... As the weather warms, they, they hold us on the tanks more and try to keep it, you know, keep LG grills off the tanks. They hold those down. Plus, at that time, we're emptying, starting to begin, or starting emptying the digester in anticipation of the project starting, we coordinating with them. So the little ones open now. Um, it's just a, the fact, I think they finished today. They were getting pretty close to having that empty. Um, so it wasn't related to the digester itself, unless they were transferring some, something in, but they would've, they would've transferred that from, and not, not water, so... That's because of the tanks. But I could double-check on that, 'cause I didn't notice the difference.
Yeah, maybe there's something going on. I don't know.
Anyways, I could just, it struck me because, you know, all of the, in terms of the graph, all of a sudden, it's twice.
Yeah, on the issue. April and May.
Right. Other than that, I have any questions? And a motion to approve the claim to...
I have so.
Excuse me? Jump to the gun.
Coaster associates gear drive and motor for 31 grand.
Yeah, that was for one of the primary tanks. Or no, excuse me, that was a secondary one. That was something that was budgeted for last year. Got an IPO on it, and just, just got it done, so... Okay. I don't remember if that was a secondary or the primary, but it was one of the tanks.
Uh, underground pipe company, Brooklyn, Dunning Avenue?
Yep, yeah, we had some issues on Dunning Avenue. There's a weird that we kinda discovered. Um, there's a really weird storm sewer that runs parallel with the existing storm sewer. Um, or with the new storm sewer. New being new in about 97 or 98. And they, when they put in the new system on the west side of the road, the basements on the east side of the road were still tied in to an existing smaller line. And smaller line didn't have manholes like most storm sewers have. It had square boxes, just like the electric boxes. You know, the manholes are the electric. Um, we had, two basements actually flooded when we had a ton of water. And went through, discovered this kind of sideline system. There's a lot of roots in there. You couldn't get through, they actually had to, we had to mill the roots out. Um, so the underground pipe, they have a, they have special mill. John was talking about, he was bracing up to try to get them 'cause it was, you know, it was looking a lot of, a ton of money. Um, John's looking to see if he can get one here for us to use. Um, but in the meantime, we wanted to make sure to mitigate that so no more basements are flooding, get the water down. And we're looking at re-lining that line. They can line, um, but they're too far apart. We have to, we have to dig down and put in some cleanouts every about 100, 130 feet 'cause they can line about that much of the, um, down through the cleanouts, so they won't have to, we won't have to dig it all up or anything. And then that would stop the root intrusion and the floods.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Special motion to approve claim for watch.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, next, we have a resolution to authorize the village treasurer to sign engagement letter authorizing MMB to conduct the Village of Webster's bird compensation audit for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2023 for the amount not to exceed $2,775. Uh, Danny, you good with that?
Yeah, they changed it. And also, it, it's, like, again, you know, these guys, they... I don't know if they, they, their grammar is kinda messed up. So it says, "Our flat fee is based on the amount of time required." Well, a flat fee is a flat fee, you know?
Right.
But then we estimate that our fee will not exceed $3,775. So I guess it's a flat fee of $3,775, but before it was phrased even worse. Um, so I... So I don't know.
Did you recommend that we wait and have that done?
Well, they send a, if they send a bill and it's over $3,775, don't pay it. Make them come in and justify it. You know?
I mean, it does say it won't exceed, right?
Well, it, but they say, "We estimate, we estimate that our fee." So I don't know whether they, you know, they, they put that word "estimate" in there.
So cross it out initially.
So, you know, it should say, forget that, "We estimate that." It should say, "Our fee for the engagement will not exceed $3,775."
Right.
Cross it out initially.
That's what I would do.
Yeah.
I, I think they're expecting to get paid $3,775. It's just Tom Zuber or whoever gets to write his, you know, these engagement letters, it's, it's lanting, you know? It's, it's pretty, you know, they're not precise in the language.
Yes. Easy, loose.
Okay. We can do that. So I changed that. So if we estimate that, uh, our fee, I just started initially with capital O, "our." Fee for the engagement will not exceed $2,775 initially. Okay? If they don't like that, then they can... They can do it. Okay?
All right, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Based on your adjustment.
Okay. Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Myers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, lastly, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the services agreement between the Village of Webster and the Webster Association of Senior Programs Support, which is commonly known as WASPs. This is, um, it's like a one-year agreement.
The dates are wrong.
The dates are wrong. And personally, I wouldn't mind extending the date, but, um, this has to be redone. This would be commencing on June 1st, 2024. And it would extend then and continue until May 31st, 2025.
You know, do you always pay WASPs $1,500? Like, how long have you budgeted $1,500 for them?
Several years. I, I thought it used to be $1,000. You remember taking it to $1,000 one time? I know, I think recently it's been at $1,500. That's why I said we could extend this and go with a 20-year...
Well, right, that's, and again, Heather, Heather sends me an email asking if I had the agreement with WASPs. So I looked, I said, "All I had was a draft, an unsigned one," which I sent to her. Then I don't hear anything bad from her, and she sticks this on the agenda in the exact form that I sent her, which was the old one.
Heather's texting me right now. She said she did update this, and she must've put the wrong one in.
Well, right.
But it's...
Because I would've suggested to her that we make it, you could add language that, you know, that it'll automatically renew unless, you know, either party gives next day's notice or something like that. Because this went a year, well, last year, this fell through the cracks, and neither the village nor WASPs did an agreement.
So she may have made your recommendation, recommended changes. She just said this is the wrong one, that got stuck.
But I'd like to see it multiple years or, you know, put in an escalator or whatever we want to, but...
Yeah, the dons are paying on every little, an hour or something. And you're fine.
Well, maybe, you know, someone should ask Danielle to look at the history of it. Like, how much of, you know, how long have you been paying them $1,500? You know, has it changed at all?
Right. All right.
So I, I guess I, I would table this. So I, I guess I, I would table this until we look into it because I agree to have it year to year, somebody will forget to do it next year.
Yep.
I don't know what triggered Heather to think of it this year, but.
I think she got stung by a bee. She went, ah!
You know, it's a good thing, it's a good thing she remembered, you know, because I never would have remembered to write up the WASP agreement, you know?
Okay.
But we should do it, either a three-year agreement or a five-year agreement, or we could do one that, you know, automatically renews unless, you know, you give some kind of notice.
Yeah. All right. She's watching, so she hears us.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know. I'm not adverse to escalating to a degree every couple of years or whatever to keep, you know, this is for the payment for their driving. So if things go up or whatever. Okay.
I assume, so I assume that town must support them somewhat too. This isn't just the village, right?
No, no, town does as well.
I wonder how much they're paying.
Five hundred.
Because you would have to think that more seniors live in the town than in the village that are using the service. It isn't just, just so that it's somewhat proportionate, you know?
Yeah, it'd be good, good to find that out though. All right, table this.
Okay, so can I have a motion to table?
We have to have a motion to.
Technically you do.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table this at night.
Technically, I'll second it.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
I might back at you.
Is it my turn?
Yes, it is, the juror.
The only thing I wanted to mention was, and Matt Chatfield sent me and Charlie, I'm not sure if it ended up, if Daryl got it, this master road dedication and land transfer agreement with Xerox. It's for the dedication of Panama Orchard Street and Mitchell Dean Drive. And it was drafted by Xerox as a term. The way it's written is, the way Xerox wrote it is, all of the expense to survey the roads, come up, draft the deed, draft a map is, is borne by the village, which is the opposite of how it's normally done. Usually whoever wants to dedicate, you know, the way into a municipality, they do the offer a dedication, they do the map, they do the deed. But Xerox, of course, they, they never want to spend any money on anything. So they, they pass the cost on to the village. And with the town, this also covers the boulder extension, and they pass all their costs on the town too to do the same thing. So if that is a, a, a no-go.
Doesn't sound like a plan wins for us.
Well, you know, you think about it, you're, you're taking a, a liability off of Xerox's hands, but roads are just a liability, they're not an asset. And they don't want to spend anything. They, you know, here, they want the village to do it.
I think that's taken over.
You know, as it is, the funding to, to bring the roads up to, up to standard is, is grants from the federal government. And Xerox is paying a nickel through all this.
Don't sign it.
Very much against it. So there's an adjustment or negotiate that.
Well, there's nothing in here about also, you know, giving some land to the village in consideration of taking the roads off their hands. Nothing about that.
So why don't we just, what do you want to do? You don't, you redline it and send it back?
Well, yes. I guess we've got to hear from, because it includes the town too. So if the town has taken the same tack that Xerox should pay the cost of, the town's a little different because that's not an existing road. That's land that they want, that Xerox is going to donate that land. So there I could see maybe the town having to spend the money to, to lay out that, that extension. But for the village, it's different, they're existing roads.
Which are in need of.
Which are in need of repair. But if, like, Daryl, if you're talking about, you know, trying to get some additional land, that's not mentioned in here at all, and I don't know who, you have to talk to Matt Chatfield about that, if that's going to get negotiated or not. Because that should be in here, and there's obviously no mention.
They're, they're, uh, we might call it a handshake agreement, but between the town and the village in terms of moving the boundaries to a degree. And, you know, I don't know if that is incumbent upon Xerox being amenable to it, or whether we can do it without. They're okay, but I certainly don't know how to cause their feelings and would like them to have some degree of saying this, you know?
Well, well, changing the boundaries, Xerox has to initiate, they have to, they have to petition the town and the village to change the boundaries. But that's kind of a different issue than the roads.
Correct.
You know, that could be done later.
Separately.
Yeah, that could be done separately. If there ever is, is a developer, someone that wants to develop the, like the West Campus, that's where the, the boundary goes right through one of those buildings. If somebody ever wants to develop that, which they'll probably tear down those buildings, you can move the, you know, the boundary can be moved then. But it's kind of the chicken on the egg. You're, unless and until the roads are repaired and become public roads, the odds of, you know, a developer coming in and wanting to develop that 80 acres isn't as great as if it were a public road. So, you know, the roads should come first and you can work, you can deal with the municipal boundaries later. But I know, Daryl, you had talked about, you know, wanting some consideration from Xerox for taking the roads off their hands, which.
Correct, I think we had.
Some of that land that's.
Right.
Some of the land that's south of Orchard Street.
Yeah, they've got some plans with the, with the BOA study of doing a, some of their ideas include a park down there and that, yeah.
But in terms of Mitchell Dean, I thought conversation had been, you know, they would have responsibility to improve, two-year guarantee on it, upper up to standards on our roads. And then we can.
Well, the way this is phrased for Mitchell Dean is, nothing would be done to Mitchell, Mitchell Dean until the village obtained funding for grants or otherwise.
Again, the onus is on us to provide everything.
To improve the road.
And I don't see that we need to go out and necessarily and get that money.
Well, that was going to be the grant that Matt went after. I don't know if he was successful. It was fiscal year 2025, with Congressman Riley's office. I don't know what happened with that.
There's some, we, we have $500,000. He has a chart made up of different funding sources and how things would all work together. Because there's different, there's, you know, there's funding that, that $500,000 is going to be additional funding for it. And that's the other existing program. You have the BOA and the ARD forward things, and there's different sources. There's something, I didn't think the BOA more than the ARD more, but different sources of funding, so there's a, you know, layout.
But this is done, the way this is done is two stages. Stage one is Orchard Street in Panama, for which there is $500,000. The village has enough money to rehabilitate those two roads. The village doesn't have the money for Mitchell. So this is phrased, you know, that's stage two is Mitchell. So it says upon securing stage two, fund the village at its own cost of expense. Again, she'll prepare the survey, the offer, dedicate, all that stuff. Normally.
Right.
Normally, normally the property owner would do all that. So anyhow, there, there needs to be a conversation with Matt Chatfield.
Can you check with Charlie to see if the town says?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll check with Charlie and the supervisor to see if the town is, I haven't heard anything from about how this is, about the proposal for the extension of the boulder park. So I just wanted to bring, we just got this last week, before.
You were on vacation.
I was on vacation, so I just looked at it, finally got paid this week. That's all I hear.
My, my attention was the fact that, of his English plan, that much skin in the game.
That's how this is phrased.
True.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that the same offer on Orchard Street came before the village board several years ago, and when the street was in much better condition and needed less repair, and the village did turn it down.
There's rent on the available right now, so that's why we're looking at it. Okay, Jake?
The gutters are about half done on Catherine Court. The south side of the road and the inside of the circle next week, no, 24th, they're coming back. I might have that wrong. It might be the actual peak. They're coming back to do the other side. And we're doing the rehab today, but we're trying to raise back in and things like that to the roadside. So that's going along nice. Everybody's been very cooperative. We appreciate that. The FCD project, as you know, has begun. We had a project meeting this morning, went over, instead of, there's three of the four contracts that got noticed and received, they've got all their insurances and everything in place. I think they were just waiting for some paperwork, their insurance, they haven't done the last one. But that's going along, they said they had the small digester off, to cover off, clean that out, getting that prep to do the repairs and rehabbing that, starting to do some excavation for the storage building that, there's a foundation that was down below there, so they had to do a little change, but there was anticipation of some, you know, hidden gems like this, so that's, you know, there's funny kind of built in for contingency things. We met with them too about some of the trees that were near the trickle-in filter, where the new trickle-in filter is going. There's three or four that were in the way, and there's some that are probably not ones you want over near a brand-new trickle-in filter. So we had, this birch grass was on the county dead, come down today. They gave a very reasonable price for going down and getting rid of those. I think what we're going to do is have one contractor in there do them all, and then we'll get an offset, we'll get a, I think a offset from that, the GC for the sewer project on what he calculated for taking care of the tree work. So we said, yeah, we got to take down, we had to take down far more than they do. But there's a lot of the standing dead ones and things that are ones that are leaning over where the new one's going, and we said, probably not a good idea to have there. So we're going to do that, and I think that's about it.
Anything from the project office?
We're very busy collecting taxes, that's about it.
People are coming in.
Yes?
I'm sorry, one more thing, there's, would be a request at the end for a executive session to discuss the promotion, demotion, employment, I don't know, I miss this on.
Higher.
Yeah, I've got it written down.
Appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. If I may.
You're taking away my speaking voice. Well, there it is. And at this point, there's nothing under that box. There is a request, going to executive session on a matter leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, supersuspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person.
What's a supersuspension? That's a tough one.
Can you make that, that there will be no other business after the?
What do I see? There will be an announcement that the next meeting, meeting will be the village board meeting on the 27th at seven o'clock here.
And no other business to be conducted after the executive session?
Uh, can't say that.
Okay.
Can't say that. As a result of executive session, there may or may not be. So there's a motion to go to executive session.
I will make it because.
I'll second.
Because what's it?
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
All right, we're out of the executive session, and there is one motion on the floor, and that is, I would ask that we consider in offering, in our interviewing of jobs for building inspector and public works position, that we authorize a limit of $75,000 and no more potential ways of handling. So that we are competitive and we are able to look for not entry level, but higher level of talent.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Val King?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Well, this is.
During the meeting?
Second.
Second? Your motion to adjourn? Is that the second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.